Good evening and welcome to the regular scheduled meeting of the Board of Selectmen for Monday, February 22, 2021 at 5:00 PM. Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We are live and in person, I feel like Saturday night, coming to you from downtown East Bridgewater. Mr. Clerk, would you take us through our short agenda for this?
Yes, I will. So at 5 o'clock, we have an appointment with Police Chief Paul O'Brien to give us an update, and we have three action items as well.
Great, thank you very much. Is anyone here for open forum? No? Okay. Then I will close open forum and move right to our appointment. Chief O'Brien and your crew, thank you for coming in.
Thanks for having us. We just want to talk tonight about our mental health program. We have the three frontline people who work it. So we're going to, it's been in existence for about three years. They're the experts, they deal with it every day, so they're going to give you a brief synopsis on how it all runs.
Great.
Okay, guys? It's Officer Cacciatore, Mental Health Specialist Katrina Lee, and Officer O'Brien. No relation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, the first part is what we do with the children, and the second part is how we handle our...
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'm going to give Cecilia some stuff.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Do you want to sit here?
No, that's okay. So I'm going to have Katrina start, she's our mental health clinician, she works with us and five other surrounding departments. So we'll just start with her on how the program works and how it got started.
Hi, everybody.
Hello.
So this program, I was hired in October of 2018. The grant was written about a year and a half prior to that, so it was a collaboration between six police departments in this area, East Bridgewater, West Bridgewater, Bridgewater, the university, Middleborough and Whitman, and they collaborated with High Point Treatment Center to fund a position for co-response, mental health. The program originally started out in the Framingham area with advocates. They've been up and running for about 17 years, so there's a good amount of data that shows that this type of program reduces, I'm sorry, reduces the cost for the communities, and it also helps those in the communities to access better treatment and to access treatment rather than being penalized in many instances by being charged with misdemeanor crimes. So our program here, like I said, I started in October of 18, and I ride along with the police officers in a co-response model, which is responding to either 911 calls that come in, follow-ups that we've had for other cases that have come in during the days that I'm not here. And we'll go and meet with the families or meet with the individual to discuss what type of help that they are looking for, that they need. It has worked very well, we've had great collaboration both in the community, it's been positively receptive by members of the community, and great collaboration within the police department. So when responding to those calls, there are a number of things that I'm able to do on scene, which is if somebody needs some type of a suicidal evaluation, homicidal evaluation, if they're just looking for different resources, I can start that, get the basic assessments done before crisis may need to follow up later if a Section 12 is issued where somebody needs to go to the hospital. A lot of that will depend on what happens at the call. So when we first arrive, it's not always that somebody is suicidal, it's, you know, there are a number of things that we can look at to help determine if somebody does need either a section or voluntary admission to the hospital. One of the screening tools that I use can help determine that, and then from there I'll decide, along with the team that I'm with, if somebody just needs referrals to someplace, if they can get in touch with their own providers at that time, or if it is something that needs further evaluation where they do need to be transported. As far as the overdoses go, or any type of substance use that somebody may be struggling with, that's something that we can also do. We'll speak with the family member if somebody is available, as well as the individual, to discuss what they'd like to do. Without either a Section 12 for the mental health or a Section 35 for the substance use, there isn't, I'm sorry, strike that, go into the Section 12. If somebody is willing to go, then it would be a voluntary, but if they're not willing to go, then, and it's called for and necessary, we could order a Section 12 to make sure that that person is evaluated at the hospital. When it comes to a Section 35 for the substance use, that's something that we can help to have family members petition the court for. So we would provide a number of resources at that time in order for them to get the appropriate materials together to section a family member or a loved one. Aside from that, some of the calls that I would go on would be any type of mental health call, it could be other things that are listed in our computer database system, which Cecilia will talk about, and there are, any large-scale event, you have a handout which kind of highlights a little bit more about the program itself and what type of calls I can respond to. Okay, all right, yep, sorry, Paula as well, sorry about that. And the, what we found is that the referrals to the police departments for people who had been utilizing the police as a crisis for either a mental health situation or sometimes a substance use, some of those calls have gone down to the police because once I'm involved with a family, they'll then begin to contact me directly, which is helpful, and that's exactly the goal of the program and the grant, so that those resources are better spent for the police department to be able to respond to other types of calls where they may be more needed. So once that initial evaluation is done, then I can follow up from there on an ongoing basis, and that has happened with several families and several cases that we've had. Some of the things that I can also respond to are either death notification, or if someone has committed suicide, follow-ups with the families. You know, sometimes people don't get back, and that is completely understandable, there could be a lot going on for that family and they just may not want the services. It's a purely voluntary program, so it's not that everybody has to participate, but if they do choose to, then there are a number of different ways that we might be able to help them and facilitate different treatment options, so.
Yeah, so Katrina kind of touched on basically how the program runs and different calls she responds to. Pat is going to talk about the variation of calls that we can go to, it's not just your typical medical mental health call.
So if I'm not speaking loud enough, let me know, I'll speak up, the mask, you kind of. So yeah, I work now, I work two day shifts and two midnight to 8:00 AM shifts, I used to work four to 12. No matter what shift you're on, you're going to be facing all type of calls where this is utilized. You know, with the typical mental health call, like I said, before we even had this established, I went to a call on how you'd usually get it, you'd get the person to go to the hospital. So, you know, one of the examples, we went over, and it was an adult female living with her father, and she had attempted suicide that day and she was not wanting to go to the hospital. So we ended up having to kind of write up a Section 12 like she said, and we had to get her to go to the hospital. So with that, now with the programs established, me and Katrina actually, you know, recently had went over there, and it wasn't for anything like that, but it was still a mental health call. We were able to calm everything down, work on everything, the relationship with them, we got therapy set up for them, counseling, all that, so it just helped build the bridge to get the resources going, calm everything down for the night, and now I feel like if something escalated to that again, though, where she did attempt suicide, me going there now has a better relationship with her. So it just helps out with that because sometimes when they just see us and they see the police, with her being there, it helps, you know, lessen the situation and now builds a relationship with us, so it helps out a lot with that. Even like juveniles, we had one time, I was on a call with Katrina, and a child had ran away, and we ended up getting the child back, and he was having stressful situations with school and a lot of stress with that, and we were able to help calm him down and get, you know, get him on track, and I think we ended up reaching out for, you ended up following up with him the following day and helping him out with his counselor. I'm trying to think, so with the PCO program, it's a huge help, too. Me and Cecilia do that also, that's with the overdoses, we do follow-ups, or the, I'm not sure if you guys are familiar with that, but anyone who's addicted to any kind of substance abuse or alcohol or anything like that, if they're in danger, we'll do a follow-up or if there actually is an overdose. So those go hand in hand with mental health. So now we're able to collab with Katrina, too, to get, you know, also, along with the substance abuse, we're able to get the mental health help also, so that's helping us huge with that. I'm trying to think, I've got a few others, if you want to go with the numbers, while I think.
Like you said, there's a lot of overlap with all that stuff, so in addition to us, you know, relieving the police department and going back to these houses, constantly increasing that hostile situation, it alleviates the ER rooms because sometimes Katrina can prevent, you know, an unnecessary trip where they sit for hours waiting for an evaluation, and it really, it really just cuts out a lot of the middle section that is unnecessary.
Yeah, we've had her do evals over the phone for us before, for a person who's in the cell when they're arrested, we've been at the house where she's like, yep, no, they need to go, so we'll talk them into, you know, getting in the ambulance and stuff like that, where she has more knowledge on the mental health. I mean, I had a call recently where it was during the day, and it was a female report in a breaking and entering at her residence, and after I fully investigated it, we realized that was more of a mental health call. So I followed up with her and got her in touch with Katrina. Long story short with it, she, since COVID had happened, she had lost touch with her therapist that she had been speaking to on the phone because she wasn't getting that personal contact, she ended up getting off her medication, which ended up causing that. We were able to get her back in, so that would have been more if we didn't have that branch and able to get that, her back on track. It would have been more of the same kind of calls going back there for the, you know, false, you know, it's not, it's a false claim of the crime where she actually thinks it's occurring, but it's not really occurring, and it's really just the mental health going on. So to able to eliminate that from our patrol going over and responding to that and fully investigating it, where now she's back on her medication, you know, back on track and everything's going good with it.
So the basic layout of how the whole, like step-by-step program works, if Katrina's with us, if she's with a cruiser, she'll respond to the call. If the call requires her assistance, she'll get out, she'll interact, she'll do her thing, decide whether or not an immediate referral is needed, or if it's something maybe the family wants to think about and contact them later, that kind of ends up on her. If she's not with us, because she does rotate between us and five other departments, the way the process works is anybody working a shift, they respond to a call. It could be a labeled medical mental health call, or it could be anything from a domestic to a suicide to a health and welfare check, because, you know, across the board, anywhere in there you could follow someone who might need mental health services. That officer will recognize that in the call, they'll then label a separate call called a medical mental health referral in our IMC system, which only we're able to be able to see and then review. I can review the report. After I read the report, I will then send over to Katrina which ones, you know, we believe after training and stuff, she should then follow up on, whether that be a phone call or whether that be an in-person follow-up where she'll come to the station and I will go physically to the home with her, and then we'll speak to the family.
Yeah, follow-up with like the domestics, that helps out huge on it. I mean, I recall one incident I was at on a night shift, where we had one, it was a father and, I mean, a stepfather and an adult son living at home, and constantly, never escalated to anything physical, but it was getting close to that point, I spoke to the stepfather and he goes, if it goes any further where, usually we're trying to figure out how to keep the peace that night and get it anyway. Katrina was actually at our station that night, so we had her come over, and that night we were able to set everything up for the son and get him going on to therapy and everything he needed with that, and it calmed down the whole situation. We haven't been back there since that I know of, so it's helpful in all aspects with the, you know, any kind of patrol call where, you know, we deem it necessary, too, and it works out. She does a great job with us, so.
Just in terms of the calls, too, it's not necessarily always a mental health call. Sometimes the police will respond to a different call, have me come in. I've worked with the age range throughout the lifespan, so it could be other things such as like dementia, Alzheimer's happening, which would be more of a cognitive issue. There could be cases that involve traumatic brain injury, and just connecting somebody to those appropriate resources, because again, the rest of the family members, you know, can get scared by some of the behaviors that people exhibit when they're, when they have a TBI. So that's something that we've also worked on, so it's not necessarily just the mental health or just the substance use calls that, you know, we're utilizing the program for. It's really just anybody who's looking for any type of assistance that could be related to some type of a cognitive or mental health or substance use issue.
And to give you an idea of what those numbers look like, last year our police department responded to a plain and simple medical mental health calls 113 times, I believe, about, and Katrina had 116 documented referrals from our police department alone, so that would include either those ones plus other calls that weren't labeled as that.
Because some of even those medical mental health, if it wouldn't require the follow-ups, if that person goes to the hospital and seeks the treatment there, I mean, I may be wrong with that, but if they're getting the proper treatment and stuff like that, I feel like...
Correct.
She'll save us on that. If we go to a house, the person's under the influence, normally we would PC them, take on the liability of holding or not, so Katrina would usually find them at bed, we ship them off and get them help, so that just saves a lot of time, a lot of officer and a big liability.
And it's helped out hugely, like going with that with the Plymouth County Outreach Program, working hand in hand, it's just all flowing together nice.
Do I have any questions? I mean, I think it's, I think it's a great program, listening to you tell those stories, I think makes people able to relate to it. I grew up in a home with a lot of trauma, and the police came a lot because my father and my stepbrother fought, and something like this would have made a whole lot of difference for me as a six-year-old watching those things, but I think, too, for my family members, so I think it's...
Yeah, we even have stuff set up.
Great that it's evolved to a much better situation for people.
Yeah.
We even have stuff set up, too, where like, when we respond for stuff like that, like the six-year-olds actually getting assistance, too.
Right.
We're setting stuff up, yeah, so it's the whole family, not just the one person involved.
All part of the kidney program.
Yeah, that's what it branches off with, too.
Yeah, there's a lot of psychoed that happens when we respond to those calls, just letting parents know about re-traumatization and things like that, you know, just being cautious when other people are around, other family members, so, so to your point exactly.
Yeah, that's great. And thank you for coming in, and I'm sure that my colleagues on the board have comments as well.
This is a, it's a tremendous program, I knew some about it through EB Hope and PCO Hope, but to see this today is putting it in perspective now. I think anyone that has any questions on whether or not our police department, you know, is in a position to handle these situations, you've just proved that, and I, and hopefully that when people that may be afraid, report, afraid to call, afraid to talk to anyone, that, you know, hopefully they'll see this presentation because we have thousands of people watching us right now.
Our ratings are so high.
But it's on a serious note, it is something that, we need more of this, we need more, maybe we can get something, you know, through cable, have you people, again, explain it to everyone like you did tonight, so it will, at least, especially after the tragedy we had a couple weeks ago. I think people will look at it, they'll be saying, we know what the responders will not be doing for us, which you've been doing all along, and congratulations.
Yeah, I kind of, myself personally, just feel naive to the point that I didn't even, you know, some of these things that we talked about, you guys talked about today, I didn't even realize they fall into the, you know, the police station. I mean, you think the police, they're here to serve and protect, you know, but I mean, some of the things, as I was reading the list, as you were both all speaking, I came to the realization that this is such a large aspect, and, you know, you take it one step further in the, you know, the covert world, as you brought up the case about, you know, not being able to see their therapist and things of that nature, it's just, you know, unbelievable what I'm sure you've been dealing with on a daily basis, and to have a program that you can, it can aid you, is dynamite, it's great, it's wonderful to hear, and like to David's point, the more information we can get out, I think it's necessary, because there are a lot of cases, and it seems to be getting even larger. You know, forget about the epidemic we had with the drugs and alcohol always being an issue, this new situation, or pandemic, I guess, is the best way to put it, that we're in, only in heightens, or heightens the situations that we're having. How long, if you don't mind me asking, how long has the program been in existence in East Bridgewater?
Since 2018, I think they wrote the grant a year before that, and then it got full swing in 2018 with us and the five other departments.
Okay. Well, I commend Chief, as well as Taj and everybody else that's a part of the program. I think it's a, it's a big benefit, and again, like I said, I was, I'm just shocked that, you know, of all the stuff that you have to work with and deal with on a daily basis, and I appreciate what the police station do, and I appreciate what your organization does to help them in that, in that effort, for sure.
Yep, Peter's right, and so is David, and I think that, you know, we all know that our mental health system sometimes feels broken and that it doesn't work as efficiently as we'd all like it to, so I really appreciate that you're doing things here to help move things into the right places so that people get the treatment and the help that they need, and we need, you know, we need to talk about it. My husband was hit by a car last May, and when he was in the hospital, a social worker came in and said to him, you know, do you want to set up services, you know, you've been through a traumatic event, would you like to, you know, and he said, no, no, he was, he was fine, and, you know, and she's, and he said, you know, I don't think I really need any help, and she said to him, do you have a brain? She said, because, and we won't talk about what his answer to that maybe could have been, but, you know, if you have a brain, we work all our muscles, you know, we go to the gym and, and, you know, we run cardio and we do all these things and, you know, we go to the dentist, but what we don't think about is that our brain is an organ, just like the rest of our bodies, and we, and we need to take care of our brains, too. So thank you for raising awareness of that and for what you're doing.
Yeah, that's it, no.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Please carry this forward, let's put it on table.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. Your 15 minutes of fame are not over yet. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. All right. Action items.
Yep, only a few here. I approve but not release the minutes of the February 8, 2021, 7:30 PM Board of Selectmen's Executive Session Meeting.
Second.
Any discussion?
Nope.
Harry, none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Approve minutes of the February 8, 2021, 6:30 PM Board of Selectmen's Meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? Harry, none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Approve and sign the financing agreement with the town of East Bridgewater and All American Investment Group for the lease with the option to purchase one new Elgin Pelican Street Sweeper, is that right?
Second.
Any discussion?
Can we ask Mr. Haynes to give us a background?
Mr. Haynes, is that why you're here? To discuss?
In the event that you might have a question.
Well, please tell us what a Elgin Pelican Street Sweeper is, because...
Especially a new one.
Does it have a pelican on it? Because I really...
I don't know why it's referred to as a pelican, I'm sorry. It's just a, pelican is a model, it replaces the, the last five years we've been working through capital planning and trying to identify a funding mechanism for a, to replace a 1997 street sweeper, the yellow street sweeper that everybody loves to see come down their street in the spring, and this will be a white street sweeper, but it's, it'll be the same.
It will never be the same.
How long is it going to stay white? I don't know.
So, but this, the methodology that we're asking the town to utilize is a municipal lease to purchase at the end of the, this will be a five-year term, but at the end of that, there's a $1 payout. Actually, the majority of the equipment that DPW has purchased since 2007, from 2007 to 17, actually every municipal piece of equipment was purchased through a lease financing program. We stopped that for a bit, but at the most recent town meeting, we actually had an article that authorized the town to enter into these agreements up to the terms of five years. They're actually used fairly broadly. It's, again, a methodology that allows us, rather than having to utilize one lump sum because the total purchase price of the street sweeper is $247,000, so it's a large capital expenditure, we'll be able to, $247,000, right? Nothing's inexpensive when you start talking about these, this type of equipment, but it'll allow us to finance it over a five-year period, which then diversifies and strengthens our capital replacement plan for equipment when, you know, public works, we have over 50 pieces of equipment that obviously have a lifespan. This particular one is going to be financed after meeting with capital planning, and there, for years, there was an inability to fund the sweeper at the full amount, so what we'll be doing is actually utilizing some of our Chapter 90 road maintenance fund appropriation for the purchase of this, we get about $380,000 annually, so for the next five years, we'll use $53,000 of that for the purchase of the street sweeper. Street sweeping not only has an aesthetic value, it's also become a really significant part of our municipal stormwater permit requirement, is actually sweeping the debris from our roadways, it's the, kind of the first step in your maintenance plan, obviously is to sweep that material off the roads. So again, in five years, we've been requesting, 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 and finally there's more of a willingness and this mechanism. Now, what we're actually agreeing to tonight is a master lease agreement, so this makes this leasing terms available for any kind of purchase the town might like to make, it's not only for this one street sweeper in the future, it can be utilized for additional DPW equipment, but it could also be police fire, any kind of municipal things that we look at and need to, need or may want to finance rather than, you know, paying for a lump sum, so that's how we've looked at it in the past, it allowed for some of the significant burden that our capital plan may put upon the town in a lump sum, we can spread that out over a period of time and give some other more creative alternatives. Again, I'd be very reluctant to want to use 65% of one year's appropriation of Chapter 90 funds to pay for a new street sweeper, but the ability to look at that and say, over the next five years, we'll use, you know, 20% to purchase it, I think is, works well for the town. It's worked well in the past.
What's the life expectancy of a street sweeper?
So the life expectancy is 12 years before you get into significant repairs, I mean, imagine what this does, drives down the street and picks up the grime, but in reality, I'm expecting that, you know, to see 17 to 20 years out of it.
Fantastic.
Any questions?
No.
All right. Any further discussion on approving the lease? Harry, none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Sit. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Town Administrator Report, Mr. Noble, how are you tonight?
Oh, thank you very much, I'm great. I like meeting online, too.
What?
I like meeting online, too. And on your desk this evening is a draft copy of the management letter from the accounting firm. They are very much ahead of schedule this year in getting our financial statements ready, and we should see a draft in your email this week. This is the management letter, and I'm bringing this as a sample of some successes that we have enjoyed. The management letter this year has pointed out nine previous issues that have been floating around for quite a while, I'm pleased to tell you that five have been resolved, two refer to issues at the school department, which they are contesting and fighting, and I think legitimately so, and two are referring to issues that they think the town has and I don't think we do. So between Melissa and I, we are responding to those to wipe those out, and most importantly, and the biggest success is that they identified no other issues at this time, which is the first time in a long time that they haven't added to the management letter, so I think we're making some solid progress resolving those outstanding issues. I want to thank the board for approving some of the policies that resolve those issues, so that's great. We should have our financial statements probably within a month, maybe a little earlier because we are preparing to go out for bonding, July 21. So I think we're making some solid progress resolving those outstanding issues. I want to thank the board for approving some of the policies that resolve those issues. So that's great. We should have our financial statements probably within a month, maybe a little earlier, because we are preparing to go out for bonding July 1st, and we need to get our bond package ready to go in time for all of that to be distributed and to the potential investors. So I think we're looking good, and I'm very pleased with this. And I want to thank Melissa and Phyllis for helping me resolve some of these issues and the tremendous cooperation that we've received from the school business manager and superintendent in resolving some of those outstanding issues. So this is a big win.
Good.
Congratulations to all involved.
You and your financial team and the schools for making such great progress on those things.
Great. I also want to bring you up to date a little bit. We are trying to make some progress on the Gladys Farron Cottage at the request of the board. And I have been communicating with Paula Wolf, who's been helpful in establishing a value. She doesn't think, and I think I trust her judgment professionally, that I could get away with a value under $10,000. So we're going to be moving forward value over $10,000. And she's agreed to inspect the building just to be sure. So we'll be using the disposal policies for in excess of $10,000, and I'll get those prepared. I don't think I can convince her to change her mind, and, you know, I think one could obviously say there's probably $10,000 worth of value. Paula's with us now. If you have any particular question?
Yeah, we couldn't get, I couldn't get into it a couple of weeks ago with the weather. Brian couldn't open the doors, and shoveling it out would have been, um. So I'm gonna try to get in there tomorrow and just kind of review what's inside. I haven't been in there since, I think I got my vaccination when I was six. Right. I've heard that there's, the old part is pretty secure, but then that addition that they put on wasn't done in a great, the greatest of whatever. And that's the kind of, not dangerous part, but the part that doesn't, isn't structurally sound and might have a problem. But you never know. I would hate to say under 10. And then there's, nowadays, the people are repurposing wood, and there's lots of features that, so you, you know, when you're trying to do that number on a, I'd rather be safe and say there might be some value, even the lumber nowadays. I don't, I don't know. But, you know, we just don't know. So I'll go in there. But Brian and I talked about it today. I felt like, you know, it's probably safer to go forward and do the, it's need, what is it, Brian, an auction?
Value of $10,000, yeah. We'd have to go to sealed bids or a public auction, which might be a fairer way of doing it anyway.
Okay.
You wear a hazmat suit when you go in.
Careful, hey?
Yeah.
We tortured.
You warned me last time, Dave.
So switching backwards. Switching backwards for a moment, Rebecca's reminded me that I need to ask you for a signature. We have to have a signature on the representation letter by the accountants for our financial statement. It goes through the facts of our financial statement, and it needs to be signed by the town administrator, the town accountant, the town, the school business manager, the school superintendent, and the town treasurer, and also the chairman of the board. And it's a pro forma document that basically says we've done the audit, and this is the way we did the audit. So I have five copies to be signed this evening. And fortunately for two of you, only one of you has to do all that signing. So I'll have that with Rebecca. And that concludes my report to you this evening.
Very good.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Noble? All right. Rebecca, any announcements?
Just one. The capital planning committee is still looking for a volunteer for that committee. If anyone is interested, you can go onto the Board of Selectmen page on the website and fill out, it's a fillable form. It's called the Appointment/Reappointment Form. So if you're just, if you're interested and you want to fill that out and send it to our office, it would be appreciated. And also, under Volunteer Opportunities, you'll see where there are other opportunities to volunteer within the town.
Great. Thank you. That's it. Word discussions. Mr. Vice Chairman, anything?
While the town clerk is here, I just said, how are we standing with the election? And do we still have open positions?
All the papers that we received back have been certified. And the only position that we do not have anyone for is the Plating Board One Year Position. Every other slot has someone, has returned, and we have a couple that have. We have a little race, a couple races going on.
That's it?
Yep.
There's not a race for board's luck?
Yeah.
Or town clerk.
Or town clerk. Then we're not complaining. Campaigning in COVID would be tricky, right? Mr. Clerk, anything? Board discussion?
Uh, yeah, just quickly, as I spoke to you earlier about Madam Chairman, we have posted the job description, like the stipend, for the rec. department. They're looking for assistance in gathering some more information. A board of seven, volunteer board of seven. We're having a hard time with timing trying to get the work done. So we came up, Brian, myself, and that department came up with a description for somebody to apply for where they'll spend somewhere in the neighborhood of three to three months at least, if not a little longer, to gather all the information so that the rec. department can really figure out what it is that their needs and wants are, not only with the athletic teams in organizations, but also some other groups that are in the town that could use their services. So that is out there. I would assume it'd be out there for a couple of weeks, and then they'll see what they get for people that are interested. Other than that, I want to thank everyone that worked with us last week. A lot of them are in here. Paula, of course, John, Brian was there, Roy, Patrick. We met with three, or I think three candidates that are three owner, business owners on the Route 18 corridor from Whitman to Island Street with their proposals for what could potentially be built in that area if we're able to successfully work with the city of Brockton to get sore. So we move forward. We have a meeting Wednesday, I believe, with town council, as well as a solicitor from Brockton and Western Sampson's representative to further those talks and try to get something work. But I think Brian will talk to the point as well as John would be, and even Paula, that it looks very, very promising if we can get this done. The revenues that the town could bring in, I think, would be of a huge benefit. And we'll continue to push forward to try to get this done and certainly update you as we get more information going forward.
Great.
Great.
Anything else? I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So I'm open, Madam Chair?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thanks, everybody. Have a good night.